Okay. This is the meeting of the Dayton Historical Commission, May 14th. We're at Old Town Hall. It's a Zoom meeting. And it's being recorded for, to be shown later on Channel, not Channel 9, YouTube TV. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Okay, and we are ready for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, since we have Rafa on Zoom, we'll have to do a roll call. I'm Pat Gales Chair.
I'm Pat Olson.
Sharra?
Dave Marvel.
Rafa?
Rafa Delphin.
Okay, and our guest tonight is Paul Pacheco. So first thing I'll do is take a motion to take historical markers out of order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second to take the historical markers out of order.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, and we'll have to do a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Sharra's aye?
Aye.
Dave's aye? Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Okay, Paul?
Alright, this is a sample I made for you. It's a little bit bigger of a letter. So I tried to do this letter here. Almost impossible. This one got a little big up when I was putting a template. I think we can always redo it to what we want. I just spoke with somebody that I've been trying to get a hold of about having them routed out. But it's another eighty dollars to have them routed out.
Okay.
This I can do a flight worth eighty dollars. Painted, of course. I didn't accept both the sizes of the lettering. There's a couple of mistakes here that can be corrected. I didn't correct them just to show you. Deal with small letters like this.
Yep.
There's gotta be mistakes. Like the H isn't right, the A's not right. So after I put it together, I just gotta go ahead and redo that.
Okay.
Cut the elements.
So you would paint it the same color or close to that one?
Yeah, paint it that and then whatever color lettering you want.
And that would be eighty dollars, sir?
Yes.
This would be eighty dollars?
Yes.
What was the other thing you were talking about, like?
A computerized router.
Can you see it, Rafa?
Oh, engraved.
Yeah.
Which one?
The white, the white one.
Why is it white?
Cause he hasn't painted it yet.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going with the design. There's, there's four things wrong with that.
Okay, yeah, I see it. I like it.
You like it? For eighty dollars?
Yes.
Is it PVC, right?
Yeah, PVC.
PVC, okay. Thank you.
So the paint should last at least ten, twenty years with the letter?
Yeah, I'd put on a whole panel.
And they say if you route it out with a computerized, there'd be another eighty, which I don't think we need. I think that looks excellent myself, but I'm throwing any more money at it. But it's up to you.
So what would happen is the homeowner would apply to us.
Yep.
And then we would approve the house or not and get the proper name for it, you know, after we do all the research. Then we would send it to you, but you would deal with the homeowner.
Okay.
So they would pay you directly.
Okay.
So there would be, you know, like tax involved.
Yep.
And if they wanted it shipped, you know, shipping.
Yeah.
So that we would include that in the price, the price that they would pay to you.
Okay.
Alright, so it'd be eighty dollars plus.
They're all in Dayton, so it's shipping, I think.
Yeah, so most of them, you know, would pick them up, you know.
And they would deliver them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's entirely up between you and the purchaser. But we would tell them that it would include the shipping if they wanted it.
Right.
You know? I think it looks.
I think it looks fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you like the white and the black lettering yourself or what?
No, it's like he's thinking that color, but that's how big the letters are gonna be.
Yeah.
So we can go to this color too?
Right. I would go to that color, because some of the houses are white, you know. I'll see ya.
Yeah.
This right now is just plain.
Yeah.
It doesn't have any paint on it.
Yep.
And even if you wanted it white, I'd paint it white, because this is kind of a gentleman.
Yes.
So it would stain and it wouldn't look good.
Okay, okay. Alright.
How many hours do you put in something like this to complete one?
So far on the design, I've been about four hours.
Oh, wow.
And then the template, cutting them out, that's the third one I cut.
Way better.
Made a few mistakes.
Way better. Well, this one I could peel right off. This looks, yeah.
Our soncrash person.
Sorry, I'm making mad.
Is it, is it the same thickness?
Yes, yeah, three quarters of an inch.
But it's just a little bit bigger.
No, the sign size is the same size, just the, the lettering on the top and the bottom.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I think it looks fine.
Yeah.
You do too.
I think that I should make this border here. I wanna adjust that. Make it a little bit thicker and bring it down so it's in the center there.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. I see, yeah.
This was the board up that I had with that when the letters were small. Then when I made it this big, and I just finished this half an hour ago.
Yeah.
It wasn't the last one. That's why I didn't paint it. I just wanted to first see if the way the design, the way the letters are all, I said I wanna make this a little bit thicker. And this is in, you know, sentence case. Still a lot of small letters.
Do you hand paint this or you have a computerized?
This is actually a vinyl sticker.
Oh, vinyl sticker goes on there, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I think that's a little bit more expensive vinyl sticker than that is. This was kinda cheapo.
Yeah.
Well, what was this, you think? Same thing sticker?
Yeah, but there's, there's, there's high quality vinyl and then there's dollar store vinyl.
That looks good though.
What I haven't experimented with yet, and I want to, is if I can put a clear coat over this.
Yeah.
It'll really be nice.
Yeah, I think so too. And it'll, and it'll last longer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Rafa, yours has a clear coat over it, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
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 So there was, I left with this one last time. What was the one that you had? You didn't like that? Is that why you left with this one?
No, that's the one we didn't like, the one that.
So I copied one you didn't like?
This was the quality of the work, because you, Rafa brought the, brought the one that came off his house.
Yeah.
You know, to look at, to see how it should look.
And it was much better quality.
I mean, it was ten times better than that one, so that's.
Ten times, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. So, okay. Alright, we need a motion to accept Paul as you want all this work. It won't be all the time.
What's in it?
His house is all over the place.
Yeah, but it's kind of a slow process, you know.
How many did you talk? Hundred design?
No.
If you need that, I'll just get some more help.
Maybe two a year?
Maybe. Maybe, yeah.
People are waiting now for a marker.
Two.
Just two, okay.
Yeah.
There's your backlog too.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to have Paul Pacheco make our new house marker signs.
So moved.
Okay, and what I will do is I'm gonna get one of the closest colors I can.
Okay.
Paint it, do it up again, and then put a clear coat.
Okay, I need a second on the motion.
I second the motion for Paul Pacheco to create our.
And any further discussion?
No, but I just wanna say, we didn't like that color, right? Rafa, we liked your color better?
Yes.
We didn't like that color red.
No.
When are you gonna be back in town?
Actually tomorrow.
Okay, so I can get you with you sometime to get that exact color?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent, I sent you the, a picture and, of my marker. Did you not get it?
Uh, I probably did.
I checked, yeah, check your text messages.
You sent it by text or an email?
Oh, with a picture or text?
It's a video, it's a video of my marker.
Oh, it's a video?
How long ago did you send that?
Oh, the first time you contacted me was what?
Oh, my God.
Two months, like two months ago?
Rafa, when you get home, hook up with Paul and look at the color together in person.
Cause my text or email might not come out the same.
Or you can just pass, pass by my house and take a picture. Cause I put it back in the, on the, on the front of the house.
Yeah.
Alright, you guys figure that out.
Just give me a call when you're back.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor, we need a roll call. Dave?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. I, Pat's aye, Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, okay.
So you guys are looking for this type of color?
Yeah, a little deeper.
Yeah, it's deeper.
It's more cranberry.
No, but I mean, you know, on the lettering also, if you like that, you want more of a gold.
Oh, look at Rafa's one you used.
Yeah.
Rafa, hook up with, you know, Paul, bring your marker.
Colors of his.
Yeah, okay. And then, so we got that done. My next question is we want him to redo the sign for Old Town Hall? Cause we're not gonna use that.
Right.
That one, okay.
So now he's got a backlog of three.
Right, right.
Make same size?
Yeah.
What's that one say?
It's gonna say, it's gonna say.
They're all gonna say this.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing that changes here.
Right, and then that's, but that's what, what we wanted to say, so.
So this is the one for here?
Yeah. Yeah. Because we don't wanna put that up at all.
Good, cause I don't need to lock it up.
No, but I mean, would you wanna put that up?
No.
No.
I'll make it one.
Yeah, so, and then, so we need a motion to approve the eighty dollars to make the, remake the Old Town Hall marker.
I'll make the motion. If we give eighty dollars to do the town marker, redo the town marker.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Nope, let's vote. Dave?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Alright, we're good to go.
Where's that gonna go?
Outside here.
Right by the door?
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll redo that one and get that all cleared up and I can fire first. Alright, well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
So Paul, because it's the end of the fiscal year, can you give me like a invoice for the eighty dollars so that if I have to encumber the money?
How, what if I have it done before the first of the fiscal year?
You'll have it done before July 1st? Okay, okay.
It'll be easy, right?
Oh, yeah, should be easy. Alright, because otherwise, you know, you have to go through all of that stuff to, with the money. Okay.
I'll get it done. Now that I've got the template, now that I know that the guys like.
Okay.
The rest is easy.
Alright, and then we can contact the other two homeowners and get that going too.
Okay.
Awesome.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
Alright.
Take care now.
Paul, thanks, Rafa.
Aye.
Have a good night. Alright, now we'll go back to our agenda. Ooh, that's fun. Rafa, on the minutes, I just had one. Under number nine, the other, I don't know, it looks like the cursor on the computer decided to go other places. So it's just, cause it has two bullet points. It says Massachusetts History Alliance Conference, June 3rd, at Devon's Conference, early bird registration. And then the next bullet says center, theme is history for everyone. More details to follow, so we just have to, I put an arrow, say it goes where it goes, where it belongs, to amend it.
Could you send me that corrections, please? I can correct it.
Okay, I'll send it to you. Alright, is there a motion to accept the minutes of April 9th as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Alright, we can vote. Dave?
Aye.
Sharra?
Aye.
Pat? Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next is the minutes of April 25th, our special working meeting. Any I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of April 25th as submitted. We need a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
I wasn't there either, that's why I don't, I shouldn't say anything.
Yeah, I, I wasn't there, he's our.
Rafa?
I, I second.
No, you have to make a motion.
Oh, I make a motion to accept the April 25 minutes.
Okay, I'll step down and second it. Any discussion? Alright, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna double check to see if we have to, you know, how we should actually. I think that's the proper way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause we do want it on, on record, so. Budget, right now our budget is the same and we do have money to pay for the marker. Cause we didn't have any expenses for FY 24 for May, April. So FY 25 budget. I was looking at the warrant article that had all the budget items from the Board of Selectmen meeting on May 8th. That indicates that a cut in our budget for two hundred and fifty dollars in the professional and technical line. So they're dropping our budget to one thousand one hundred and fifty, recommending to drop it there. So we had put in seven hundred and fifty for it. On April 29th, the Board of Selectmen recommended that the professional and technical line drop to five hundred. And then the FinCom on May 2nd recommended the same, so that our total budget would be one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. They are, they're actually meeting again tomorrow night to continue to review the budget. So I would say that that, that's what's gonna go in the warrant is the eleven fifty. If we want, we can always stand from the floor and say we want our fourteen hundred. So.
I mean, you got a small budget to begin with.
I know.
You should keep what you have. I would fight for it.
I would fight for it.
Considering what other people are getting, I, I see no problem with this.
So just stand up and amend it to say fourteen hundred. Rafa?
Yes, I'll fight for it.
Alright, that means we have to go to be there to vote for it.
Yes.
I have to be there anyhow, so. We'll have to step down and.
Okay. Cause it comes out of the professional and technical and I just, you know, that's our conference money, that's how we
They're expensive to begin with.
You know, consulting, if we have to meet with her.
Yeah.
Or if we have to, you know, any kind of technical things, so.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Not much you asked for, so, yeah.
I know, cause I looked at some of the other budgets and I was trying to figure out where they were making cuts. But I'll look at the next one too.
Yeah.
What they do tomorrow night, so. Alright. Moving on to unfinished business. So I got the final. Oh, I should have emailed this to you, Rafa. I didn't even think. This is the release form and what is it read is the change that the town administrator made. And it's a change from it's just in the release information, it says, "I hereby indemnify and hold harmless the town of Dayton and its historical commission and its officers and volunteers in both official and personal capacities from any and all claims related to the interview materials, including my experiences, recollections, as well as any photographs or documents I may have provided. By doing so, I also understand that I have no copyright or other rights in the work. What was changed was the sentence that I hereby release claims and identification to the town of Dayton, its historical commission and its volunteers, the interview materials provided." So the first sentence is the new sentence. And that's from the town administrator. So once we make that change, this release form is ready to go. Do I have a motion to approve the amended release form for the preserving memories program?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, changing. Second it.
Okay, so we're just approving the amended release form. And, you know, that's all that it is to make that, those word changes. Alright, any discussion? Nope, alright, let's vote. Rafa? Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Sharra's aye, Dave?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So now with that change, we can start moving on to the next step, which would involve you and Zach coordinating.
Alright, I'll give you an update. So anyhow, I called Ron, cause I know Ron's very busy, Old Connor, nice guy.
Yeah.
So anyhow, he's got a few pictures he wants to donate to the Time Caps.
Okay.
And I told him basically, just get him like, you know, the regular postcard size, that we've put a few in there. So he's gonna get one like the old bridge, the red and white market, market, and a couple of other things around town. Maybe the old community church and things like that. So we're good there. The studio is almost there. The only thing, we haven't did any dry runs, but I'm getting to the point where I think we should, when the other gentleman comes back, we should just stop booking it and and move ahead since the forms and everything else is done. You guys have been waiting on me. I do have a two terabyte drive where we can start some storage on, for now, till we figure out later on what to do with that.
Okay, so that's the other issue that's still out there is the storage.
Right, and I think the storage for now, maybe either we keep it at Cable Office or I'm thinking the safe, I don't know if we have to go that far with it. How is the safe though, Paul? Is that air quality?
The safe downstairs is temperature controlled.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay. Is it, and it's room where it's small things, right, if we need to?
We could put, make space on the historical commission shelf.
Okay.
It's a little enough.
Yeah, and we can decide on that later, where you want that located.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to it. I think it'd be great. We got a table there, we got chairs, we got four chairs. We get the lighting. It looks like a, it looks like a great studio when you walk into it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You were the first one to say it, basically.
Looks good? Well, if you need people to do like practice runs, just let us know.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's why I was saying the Dolphins, we sort of like headlining the whole thing and said, "It looks good, we'll get to start making some runs with it."
Right.
So.
Right, okay.
Is there on a candidate for, to be interviewed?
Ron O'Connor?
Yeah.
He could be.
In town? I have no idea, I'm a.
I don't know how long he's lived in town, but he's, we could talk about the photographs that he's taken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That could be a video shoot too, if he wants it. He likes stuff like that. He could show his pictures and everything. I don't know, you must have seen him down at the, the Arts Festival with his, yeah, great, great, you know, pictures out there. I like that idea, I think.
I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do with it. You know, and there's all kinds of people in town. People that live in some of the older homes, like Mr. James. He's been in that house forever. Who else did I think of?
Not forever. Where did he live before that?
Oh, he was, he was also at the Aggie School when he was a superintendent there.
Right, but I mean, he hasn't lived on Elm Street forever.
No.
My mother looked at that house, she really bought the house, they did, so. I know in fifty-one.
Yeah.
That's when she bought that house, so.
Well, that's forever for us.
Yeah, I wasn't around either. But she looked at, and that was available at that time, that was for sale.
Yeah, so, okay. The next is our walking, oh, our walking tour pamphlet, and I did some edits on it and I sent them to Zach and Zach was working on it, but he's not here tonight, so we'll have to table that, that part of it for now. But Sharra has some news about the brochures, our walking tour brochure.
Yeah, so Bay Coast actually donated three hundred and, three hundred dollars, three, um, three hundred and fifty dollars to us for our historical, and we can use it toward our brochures.
Very nice.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that was, I'm glad we did it.
Yeah.
We did it.
Yeah, so we need to write a thank you.
Yes, so on the back of the brochure, it would be nice to say thank you for the donation.
Right, we, so we'll put that, put that there, but we also just send them a letter. I can write a letter.
Perfect.
Yeah. I was gonna.
Cause I know we said that there would be a little bit of room in the back anyway, so that would be kind of a perfect spot.
Right. And when we were talking about the brochure, it came up during our, our working meeting real briefly, was that to do two of them, one for the shipyard, the Corum Shipyard, and one for the, the wharfs, rather than trying to jam it all into one, so.
Okay.
And we have enough funding to be able to do that.
Okay.
Awesome.
Awesome. Where are we gonna, where are we gonna go for the?
We can get a price from Deval, once it's, cause once Zach gets it all laid out.
Yeah, we could do, Deval, could we even ask BP?
We could do BP.
Cause they might even be a little bit, you know.
Yeah, but you wouldn't spend three hundred and fifty dollars at BP, I don't think.
Yeah, that's true.
We could ask, we could ask for the price.
Okay.
There's a group out there, Special Needs, they take care of the pamphlets for the the Arts Festival every October. We could check with them. I'm not sure if they're gonna be cheap enough or not. But they do the, you know, the booklet when you walk into the Arts Festival every year, they put that together. I don't know if that's what we're looking for or not.
Oh, do they, they put it out, they fold it and?
We send them the pictures, everything, they fold them, they, they bind it, the whole thing, depending on the booklet.
Okay.
You know, I don't know how many pages we're looking at too.
Yeah, it's, actually, it's gonna be more like a tri-fold or so that it would just come back, come on like two sides.
Yeah.
And then it would be folded like this.
I could just bring one up to, to committee and just say, can you get a price on this first and see when the time comes?
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
Have you always gone to Deval for?
Yeah, the town has an account there.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know my outwork's there.
Bringing the business back.
My outwork's there like two days a week.
Okay, so we'll put that, the rest of that on the agenda for June. So our working committee for the survey forums and recommendations, Min's pretty much covered, you know, what we talked about. We developed questions to ask Stacy, and I had sent that to everyone for recommendations regarding, you know, from the recommendations from Mass Historical Commission. I did invite Stacy to attend tonight, but she had a conflict, or we had a conflict with timing and everything, cause we knew Paul was coming and she wanted to come like right up first, and I'm like, well, we already scheduled with him, so she'll be here in June.
Okay. Okay.
So if we think of any other meetings, um, she will be here via Zoom, no charge.
Okay.
Um, if we think of any other questions for her, we can add them to the list that we made. Our next meeting will be May 30th at 6:00 PM in the police conference room. Um. And also, as you're looking at forums in your spare time, uh, if you come up with a question or something that you want Stacy to address, you know, just send it to me, and we can add it to the list. Um. We did the historical marker. Rafa, you're next up. Does anyone have any other questions about that?
Here is Stacy with the West Dyson.
That's, that's on the warrant for town meeting.
So does she know it's coming?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, fine.
Yeah. Yep. I'll send her, I told her that we had to wait for town meeting, um, but that, we would be in touch.
Great.
So. Um. New business, your letter, Rafa.
Yeah, what about my letter?
What about it?
I forgot you bring my copy, sorry.
You wanna just table it till next time?
Sure, no problem.
And I have a motion to.
There's no rush.
Yeah, and I have a motion to table the information letter for North Dayton property owners until June. So moved.
I second.
All right, um, and we'll vote. Um, all in favor, Dave?
Aye.
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 Aye, and that's unanimous, that passes, okay. Onto reports. Um, CPC will be meeting Thursday, this Thursday, May 16th at 5:30. Then at 6 o'clock, uh, it'll be the CPC Annual Public Meeting with committee introductions, a CPC overview about how CPA funds are collected and used, um, some past projects, and if you have any ideas how you'd like to see the funds used, you can bring them then, if you care to join us. They have to do that annual meeting, um, under the, that act, the Community Preservation Act.
Okay.
Library Building Committee, we met on May 6th, will be meeting again on May 30th at 4:00. And on May 6th, it was a joint meeting with the library trustees. The library director has began, um, begun ordering the furniture and fixtures from the Eremach account, um, the 87.5 that the town got. We had a donation of shelving from the New Bedford Whaling Museum.
Wow, nice.
Um, architectural drawings are being prepared to, um, to go out for bid. The monies will be tight, of course. Um, and our next meeting is May 30th, but it's coming along.
Um, how are those stairs that we designed at the last meeting?
Oh.
It took you a minute. I'm, I'm not gonna laugh.
Yeah, you can laugh. They're, still there. Actually, they're gonna have some wrought iron in them, too. I'm glad you brought that up, because, um, we've been asked to decide about wrought iron, and also, there'd be some railings going out here on Old Town Hall, and if we could have them look the same. And I said to, um, the building inspector, I said, "Why don't you just repeat what we have inside, outside and at the, um, Smith Memorial Hall, if you need to use, you know, so that it's all the same."
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, because that's just plain. Sometimes they have little squirrely things in them, you know, so if you see a, a wrought iron thing that you like, take a picture and.
I had an uncle who had a wrought iron business.
Really?
Down the key.
Wow.
The packet landing iron?
I never, yeah, say.
Oh, huh, that's cool.
Do you know much about wrought iron?
Hey.
So if we see, you know, a design or something that we like, you know, we can bring that forward, too, for that.
Okay.
Okay. Um. 250th Anniversary Committee, um, met last night. So we're trying to narrow down possible activities and programs for 2025 and or 2026. We'd like to host a reenactment of a battle, um, or an encampment. Um, we had a lot of discussion about involving the schools. Um, Robyn LaCroix is working with Myrna Santos on identifying the Revolutionary soldiers from Dayton, and they're using the Lives and Fortunes book that, um, the committee in 1976 made, and it does list all the Revolutionary soldiers, but it just lists the battles that they were in, and what regiments that they, um, participated in. And, but what Myrna and Robyn are hoping to do is add a little more biographical information to it, so you know, you know, like, something about them and their connections to Dayton. So, that's a, a, a big job. We're also discussing each centennial or anniversary, you know, um. Probably, I, I don't know if I saw one from, 1912 had a book. They, they've always had a deliverable, so we're looking at that, you know, what kind of things do we, do we want to produce for the public to have? When you had your, um, 2012 anniversary, you had the anniversary book, the 250th, and had the anniversary book. So there's always been a deliverable, so we're looking at that. Um. We're highly, gonna highlight some votes from town meetings from 1774 to 1776, because Dayton did take some, some votes. Um, of course, there's always extensive, extensive discussion regarding budget and fundraising. You know, because that's gonna be the driving, what can we afford to do, and what can we raise money for? Um, I'm gonna be speaking at the Memorial Day Program to share information about the semi-quintcentennial um, of the United States, and how we're planning on honoring our revolutionary, um, ancestors. So that, that committee's.
Patrick speaking?
Probably, I don't know. Ray's putting the program together. I would think so. He usually does.
Yes.
Yeah.
Usually the same speech.
Yeah.
You should practice it when you. Put that mobile with beautiful flowers.
Is this the Memorial Day service?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now, I know they sort of like, uh, delayed the traffic a little bit, too, for about 15 minutes.
For the noise, yeah, yeah. Hopefully, they'll do that again, right?
I mentioned that to, uh, Peter Karen, so he was gonna work, right?
Yeah.
Get back to us.
So, okay, um, all right. Under other, our next meeting date is June 11th at 6:00.
Okay.
Um, the Mass History Alliance Conference is June 3rd. Uh, it's $125 per person plus mileage, and I sent you the program that they had.
Yeah, I printed that.
You printed that?
Yeah, I didn't print it for everybody, but I did.
Yeah, so they, they had some interesting things, I thought.
Yeah.
Um, they had one working with the, um, archivist, under the, the Shrab Program, I think it's called, um, in digitizing things, which I thought looked interesting. So they had a couple. I don't know if people are interested in attending. It's a Monday.
I, I, I honestly would be interested to attend, um, and obviously go with whoever.
Mm-hmm.
Our pool.
Would anybody else be interested? I know Zach might be.
Okay.
Um, I might, I might be, too. Um. Let me look, so. We approved $80 tonight for our plaque. So that's gonna give us like, 499 and 259.
Nine.
249. Oh, we, we, oh, I was figuring, like, we would be paying about the same for the, um, marker. That's a good price.
It is.
You know.
That is a good price.
So we can, I think we can afford to send two people to the conference, if they wanna go, and, um, and also pay for mileage. Does anyone? I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve two people to go to the Mass History Conference on June 3rd at $125 each plus mileage for one vehicle.
One vehicle.
Yes.
So moved.
That's second.
Any further discussion?
Peter Karen should be their chauffeur. He has a nice, expensive car, and it's going to be in the movie.
Maybe if Zach decides to go, maybe he could borrow it.
Yeah. Devon's Conference Center.
I've been out that way. That's a long drive.
Yeah.
Beautiful drive, a long drive.
Yeah.
All right, um, any further discussion? No, let's vote. All in favor, or?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Intention's, okay. What I will do is I'll offer it to Zach first, you know, and figure out. So Sharon, you can fill it out, if you fill it out, and, um, send it in, and then keep all the paperwork so you can get reimbursed.
Perfect.
And we'll do it that way, okay? Perfect, okay. There is another, um, conference coming up in September, and this is the one, Rafa, that we went to in Plymouth many, many years ago, so in this, um, the Mass, Massachusetts Preservation.
I thought it's gonna be digital, virtual.
No, this one's, it's gonna be in Worcester, a- at the Hanover Theater on September 27th. Um, but that's all, they're just looking for, um, speakers right now, with more information to follow, so just keep that in mind. Um, real briefly, the James Briggs Garden, uh, through the efforts of Kevin Smith and Nicole Mello, is coming back to life. They've done a lot of work. They've done a lot of work there. Uh, I did talk to Kevin, and it will work with him to do like, a dedication. You know, he's very excited, so he wanted to look nice when we do that. That's that. Under correspondence, I shared with you the email from the ADA Coordinator, Jonathan Gale, on, um, making our meetings accessible. That's why I figured out how to turn on our chat thing. Um, I did email him and, uh, the Board of Selectmen and Mike Mullin with a couple of questions regarding.
Somebody wants to say hello.
Oh, hello, Willow.
Hello, it's awesome, you look so well.
Oh, so cute. Um, I had questions about who's doing the official wording for the agendas, you know, because if, it's a town-wide thing, all, we all should have the same wording to go on.
Yeah.
Um, who's gonna be paying for the new, needed services, because I know those à la carte and ASL services cost money. Uh, and the friends tried to do it, um, for their program, for the candidates tonight, and they didn't have any tapers, but it was, it's expensive. Um, and also a timeline for implementation, so, um, I haven't heard anything back yet. Those were my questions. I don't know if you had any others after you read that, the email, so.
Yeah.
My biggest concern was who was gonna pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
Because that can eat up our budgets. Quickly. All right, does anyone have anything else?
Is there a firecracker festival this year?
I haven't heard anything yet.
And don't you think we would have by now?
Yeah, because we would, yeah, it would be, yeah, it's, but, yeah, because.
I can check with Kevin and find out.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
I know he was moving out to September like the last one.
But didn't we decide, you know, I mean, it wasn't as, the first year they had it, it just followed COVID, I mean, we had great attendance. And the last couple of years, it's not really worth your while.
I felt, I felt like there was a lot of people out of town that was showing up, saying, "Oh, I didn't know what was going on, I saw something," and, and I noticed, and there was a lot of people that weren't even from Dayton, that were like, showing up and talking, right? Like, I felt like it wasn't well-attended from.
The people you would hope would go.
Right.
Correct.
Right, yeah, and both.
I mean, it happened to be like, 100 degrees that day.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, it was horribly hot.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, the, the last two were horribly hot. And we can probably, you know, check on that, so.
Also, lack of volunteers. Kevin told me, uh, that some people wa- wanted to volunteer, but, uh, at the end of the day, they never showed up.
Right, right. And that's always a problem with volunteers.
Sure.
They couldn't commit themselves.
Right, so, all right, does anyone have anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved that.
So moved.
So moved.
That's all you need.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I got you, I got you that time. I got you that time.
And we are adjourned.
Bye-bye, Rafa.
45 PM.
Bye.
Enjoy your KKK, buddy.
I did make.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Oh, boy.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I was eyeing.